Good morning, good morning Birmingham. I'd like to welcome everybody to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council on May 12th at 9:30 a.m. This morning, we're gonna have our invocation, Council Hilliard, and our Pledge of Allegiance by Council Smitherman. If everyone could please stand.
May we all bow our heads. Gracious Father, thank you for this wonderful and beautiful day, Father God. Father God, we thank you for the strength that you've given us to come together, Father God, as a city, as a state, as a nation, Father God, to combat COVID-19. Father God, we thank you for all the things that you have done for this council and everyone around it, Father God. Father God, we continue to ask you to wrap your arms around us, Father God. Heal our bodies, Father God. Heal our minds, our spirit and our soul. Give us the strength to work together, Father God, so that we may solve the problems of this great city, Father God. Father God, we thank you for all that you have done, Father God, in allowing us to walk in your footsteps, Father God. Father God, these we ask, in Jesus's name, let's all say amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clark.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Great, how are you?
Good, good, if you can call the roll, please.
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning here.
Good morning. Councilmember Hilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Present.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Councilmember Abbott. President Parker.
Good morning, good morning. Okay, need a motion on the minutes for January 7th and 14th, 2020.
Alright, got it. Oops, well, one second, please. Councilmember Alexander and Smitherman. Alright, voting should be open. Councilmember Alexander.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember, I thought he was here, I'm sorry.
He was.
Uh, Councilmember O'Quinn. On the minute, sir. Uh, Councilmember Smitherman. Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Council President Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams, this is on the minutes.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, alright, the minutes are approved. Minutes are not ready for January 21st through May 5th, 2020. Any boards and agencies, Mr. Clark, we're good? Okay, alright, um, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. Mr. Clark.
Uh, we're starting on page two with item one. Uh, skip over to page 23, we have item two on consent. Page 24, we have item three. Page 26, we have items four and five on consent. Page 27, item number six is on consent. Page 28, item seven is on consent. Page 29, item eight is on consent. Page 30, we have items nine and 10 on consent. Page 31, we have item number 11 on consent. Page 36, we have item number 12 on consent. Page 37, there are no consent items. Page 38, we have items 17 and 18 on consent. Which one, which one? Uh, okay, we'd like to withdraw 18, and when we get to the actual item, 16 as well, that's on page 38. Page 39, we have items 19, 20, 21 and 22 on consent. Page 40, we have items 23, 24, 25, 26 and 27 on consent. Page 41, we have items 28, 29, 30, 31 and 32 on consent. And I'm forgetting to click. Page 42, we have items 33, 34, 35, 36 and 37 on consent. Give me one second here. Page 43, we have items 38, 39, 40 and 41 on consent. Page 44, we have items 42, 43, 44, and 45 on consent. Page 46, we have items 46, 47, 48 and 49 on consent. And I think you have three addendum items.
Okay. Dr. Quinn, we'll start with you on the consent agenda, and we'll just work our way around.
Thank you, President Parker. I would like to remove item 40 from consent. This is page...
Okay.
Forty-three.
Yes, sir.
What page is that?
And, um, I'd also like to add...
They want another page, Council.
Okay.
They want you to repeat the page again.
Okay, uh, that is page 43, item number 40, removed from consent.
Alright.
And then, um, on page 37, I'd like to add item 13 to consent.
Uh, what number is that again, I'm sorry?
Item 13 on page 37.
You'd like to remove it?
No, I would like to add it to consent.
Okay, is that off?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Council Hilliard?
Yes, sir.
President Pro Tim?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Council Smitherman?
Yes, on item six, I need to remove some properties from there. Uh, 321 gold wire.
One second, Council.
Okay.
So here's, uh, I guess we could still leave it on consent. You need to withdraw those items from within there, or delete them, you would like to strike which ones?
Uh, 321 gold wire.
Wait a minute now, on item six?
Yes, probably not item six.
Items...
What page are we?
Sorry, it's page 27.
Item six. Okay, you said 162? That's, to the left, it'll say 162.
Okay, so it'll be for item six, uh, it would be 158, so that's 408 gold wire.
158, okay.
159.
Okay.
And then... 161. 160. 162. And 163.
Okay.
And now I would like to put item 51 on consent.
Okay, alright. Council Woods? Council Williams? Okay, alright, um... Alright, Mr. Clark, I'm gonna read my tagline, and then we can get through. Okay. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in public hearings or requests. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of a permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only, all public hearings will be announced, so...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, give me one second to delete 18.
Okay, before we vote, Mr. Clark.
Okay.
You have assist, yeah, do you have, is there an item?
Yes.
Item number?
Yeah, I was trying to get you to, yeah, come on up, what, what's the, I think we were taking some off the list, but which item are you referring to, sir? And good morning, how you doing? Good morning, yes, sir.
Um, item number five, um, I received a letter for an abatement cost fee. And it was dated back in, for 2016, let's see, item number five, number 16.
Okay, um...
So we'll just do the same as we did with Council, get that worked out?
Okay, well, let's move to, on item five, just to take off, is item five, number 16?
Yes.
So we'll withdraw that from there, strike it?
Okay, alrighty, so... So we just, Mr. Clark, we're just gonna wait till we get to the item, or we can...
No, we can leave it on consent, and we just need to, someone, he needs to speak to someone in public works, I would guess.
Um...
And then we put it back on next week if there's a problem with it, or...
We're gonna take, we're gonna take your item five, number 16 is gonna, we're gonna remove it, and then we ask the mayor to have you speak with someone, think from, from, uh, public works or something. Okay, alright. So, alright, we're ready, uh, to now vote.
Okay.
With that...
Council Abbott in right quick.
We're doing the consent agenda, so, okay. Oh, we're just ready, okay, hold, hold on, okay, hold on, we have, you have another item? Okay, if you can...
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine, uh, you have the same issue, I would take it, okay, we... Okay. If you've got that address, can we just make a motion that that address be taken off? What address?
Uh, it's 75 14th Second Avenue South. Seventy-five, I'm sorry, yeah, 14th Second Avenue South.
Can we just ask for that?
Yeah, I gotta find it.
Oh, okay, you gotta find it. Alright, um...
It's number 84, item seven.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
Number 84.
Seventy-five 14th Second Avenue South.
Yes, ma'am.
It's on page 28.
Page 28? Thank you.
Must've been on the school board or something, you read that quick?
Yeah, that's, that's the only way you can pull that off.
Thank you, President Pro Tim, thank you.
Now, what number inside of, um, seven, I'm sorry?
Uh, 84, sir.
Alright, thank you, Council Pro Tim.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna withdraw your item two, sir.
Okay, alright, so minus the item we just spoke about, um... You don't have, you have, okay, oh, you're just speaking, okay. Alright, so, Mr. Clark, we're ready now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, we had a, of a motion, and second, approve the consent agenda?
We do.
Alrights. We're ready to vote on consent agenda.
I'll just record it, it's Pro Tim Alexander and Abbott, how about that?
That's fine, that's great, okay.
Voting should be open.
Alright.
Council Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Abbott. President Parker.
Aye, okay. Alright, the consent agenda is approved. Mr. Clark, we're ready?
Okay, I guess we'll go to, what, 14?
Yes, sir. Uh, it's gonna be, yes, sir, we're, uh, we're gonna read both of them together.
Alright. Item 14, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Morehouse College and Tuskegee University, under which the city will host the Morehouse Tuskegee Football Classic at the Legion Field Stadium for a term of two years, commencing October the 20, uh, 20, I'm sorry, commencing October 20, 2020, and may, uh, be renewed, um, for three additional one-year terms, subject to an appropriation by the city in each year's corresponding fiscal year budget, and the city will provide pursuant to Amendment Number 772 incentives, in-kind services relative to hosting the Morehouse Tuskegee Classic, in an amount not to exceed $500,000 each year, which will generate revenue from out-of-town visitors and tourists, and will provide positive publicity for the city. Then item 15, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Morehouse Tuskegee University and the Birmingham Park and Recreation Board to provide that the Morehouse Tuskegee Football Classic football games shall be held at historic Legion Field Stadium for a term of two years, commencing 2020 season and 2021 season, and the agreement may be renewed for three additional one-year terms, subject to an appropriation by the city in each year's corresponding fiscal year budget. The city shall pay to Morehouse and Tuskegee a combined sum not to exceed $100,000 each year. Uh, the Morehouse Tuskegee Classic is played at Legion Field.
Okay, alright, sir, motion?
Hold the item.
Okay, alright, the items are before us, before we get started, Mr. Mayor, let me just kinda get us to where we are at this point. Um, yesterday, the item did go, uh, through Budget and Finance, a lot of discussion. Um, what I would hope to kinda keep things in the middle of the road. We have a conversation, we get the information, and then, um, we have a work session to talk through a lot, cause there are... I think there's a lot of unreadiness on this one, and I love sports, and I love college football, and this is right down my alley, but also, I think there's a, there's some, uh... There's just some unreadiness here, so, if we can have a presentation, come back, uh, I think we can zero in on some additional questions that have come up, and then, uh, we, uh, schedule a work session and then bring the item back, cause I want, when we do this, to be unanimous, everybody's support, and I think it gives us a, we're all on board together, so, um, if we could just kinda let that marinate, but, Mr. Mayor?
Well, a couple of things, thank you, Mr. President, I don't think this has to be unanimous, I would ask that you actually, actually vote this up or down today. I've had a chance to talk to all of y'all, so, um, I've even asked a question of any unreadiness, by call, email, let me know, we can talk about it. Happy to present to you today, but I do ask that you vote this up or down today, I know that sports and entertainment has been a priority to this administration, not just to this administration, but to this council. You all have done a couple of things to, um, actually make down payments on that, in the form of increasing, um, lodging, the lodging tax, to make sure the city of Birmingham is in a position to recruit more, um, sports and entertainment. This falls in that bucket, so, probably back in November, December, I had a conversation, um, with one of the institutions, and then there was, we started active conversations as, as an administration back in January, um, with both institutions. That has led us to this point today, where we're happy to present this for you, um, portion of it as a 772. This classic is actually, from a historical standpoint, longer than the Magic City Classic. Uh, this year will make the 85th year of this storied game in the same city for the first 84 years of it, which is in Columbus, Georgia. So the whole idea that both institutions are willing to move to this city, um, says that we're doing something right, as far as the investments you all have made in sports and entertainment. I think the second point to make is, I wanna be clear that this is not to exceed. And so, the budget we gave you is just that projected upon the conservator and based on the max cost we would spend, so an example is, um, I like to use the line for the police of 66,000. That number is based on having, uh, 75,000 people inside the stadium, 75,000 people outside the stadium, for a total of 150,000. I think we all know that this game in its first year, we're building, there won't be 150,000 people out there, therefore, we won't be spending 66,000 on police. That is one example of that entire three-page detailed budget that says, all of that is max cost, not to exceed 500,000. It's 100,000 between the city of Birmingham and these two storied institutions. It's the actually hard count, where 50,000 goes to Tuskegee University, 50,000 goes to Morehouse College. Both institutions receive 10% of ticket sales, now here's the thing, that I think each of you all, as individuals and as collective body, can appreciate. There is nothing about the, um, the Indy Race, the Birmingham Bowl, even the contract, contractual relationship we have with UAB, six games, as well as the Magic City Classic, all those events I named and many others. None of those contractual relationships had, have embedded in them, that the city of Birmingham actually nets revenue from the actual ticket sales. We thought as a new administration, when we bring a new event to our city, um, many of you all have complained, um, that the city puts out, puts out, puts out, doesn't get anything in return, well, embedded in this contract, the city of Birmingham, I don't even have to speak yet to indirect impact as it relates to lodging taxes and, uh, sales taxes, et cetera, people being in our city Thursday through Saturday. I'm speaking directly to the contract where both institutions have agreed, the city of Birmingham nets 80% of sales. On the low end, 84-year classic in Columbus, Georgia, a stadium that holds 15,000 people, and it averages 18,000, so they're packing in 3,000 extra people standing room only. We know that a minimum, with an aggressive, uh, marketing strategy here, we're gonna net at least 20,000. That 20,000, based on the information I shared, you nets the city of Birmingham a lot of revenue, so it's not just putting out money and not seeing a return, or only seeing an indirect return. It's actually making an investment in sports and entertainment, and we receive a direct impact. So, I think that's important to note. The other thing is, why I would actually support it up and down today is because, under our 772, um, presentation, public awareness, we would have to wait an additional two weeks. Um, now, I know there were some questions yesterday about where we are as a budget, but I would like to remind, um, this body, as some of you all have reminded me, none of you all want us to stop, uh, economic development, none of you all want us to stop sports and entertainment. This conversation predated the pandemic, in addition to that, um, I imagine in the month of May, definitely, you know, later than June, we will be bringing other things before you to support, and so, not just looking at this as a football game that the city of Birmingham's supporting, but more of the investments the city of Birmingham's making in sports and entertainment, which this body has been pretty supportive of since we all came in, um, October and November of 2017. And now I wanna turn it over to Fay Oates, who's over Sports and Entertainment for the city of Birmingham, to give you all a little bit more detail about how we got here today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I'm Fay Oates, I serve as Commissioner of Sports for the Mayor's Office of Sports and Entertainment. Uh, just to reiterate what the mayor said, we did start on this in November of last year. And we, when we started on this, we felt like it was a great opportunity, had a lot of discussions with both university administrations, which led to a site visit. And in those discussions, we found out three things that were very important for these institutions. Expanding their brand to our, to this market, um, the student athlete experience, because in Columbus, unfortunately, the, the students, it was just a fo, a football game for them, they did not have the experience. And then, student recruitment for our local students. And so, we built this game, and we worked on addressing those three important points, came up with the budget, as you all have seen. And we also held a site visit here in Birmingham in January, uh, Morehouse's president was here. Tuskegee's president could not come because of an illness, however, she sent her second in charge, and several other administrations members, several other members of that administration were also here, and they were extremely impressed with what we put together and what we proposed. Not only with this renaissance our city has experienced, but also the detail we put into showing them the Civil Rights Institute, which would be a huge part of those student athletes coming to our city and having the opportunity to take part of that. In exchange, it's a great opportunity for us as a city, not only do we have the upside of the revenue, we have the upside of making money for, I think, one of the first times since I've been around, I've been around a minute, we also have the opportunity to host these historic teams. As you know, both of these HBCUs have a storied history, and I think it will be great for our community, our citizens and our students here to take part in these university activities. Also, I'd like to point out, in this contract, for the first time, I'm calling it the COVID clause, there's a lot of discussion around the world of sports. Is sports gonna take place in the fall, are we gonna have spectators at football, baseball, there's a lot of discussion. Well, as y'all know, without spectators, it does not do us any good as a city to host an event. So, the Law Department came up with this COVID clause, as I'm calling it, so we're not obligated to host these institutions, we're not ob, obligated to, um, pay the fees that are associated with this game, if in fact, the NCAA comes down and says, hey, it's just too dangerous for our kids to play, or it's too dangerous for our kids to play in front of spectators, we will not be obligated to move forward. So I just wanna close by saying, this is a great opportunity, my team, Mayor's Office did a lot of homework in trying to make sure this made sense in terms of bringing it to our city, and I, we concluded that it did, so, thank you.
I know I've spoken to each of you, um, and there were some, some conversations, but I am more than willing to, um, engage any other questions today, but I will reiterate the point. I think this body's very capable of being decisive, and any discussion you would like to have, we can have now, but I ask that you do vote this up or down today, thank you.
Okay, alright. Questions, thoughts, Dr. Quinn, start now.
Thank you, Council President Parker. Um, my first question is written in regards to item 14, the actual agreement with, uh, uh, two schools. On page three, under section four, classic management and cities coordinator, uh, there's a couple of sentences that read, "All preliminaries dealing with the planning, coordination and logistical work of presenting the classics shall be the city's responsibility. Experienced personnel shall fulfill the city's obligation of hosting the classic. In addition to a classic football game played each year on Saturday, the classic event shall include an alumni affairs event, press conference, college fair for high school students, team luncheon, team transport to and from the game, president's reception and president's hotel accommodations." Uh, so my, my question is, is, are the expenses associated with all of, uh, those activities, is that included within the $500,000 total?
The answer is yes, uh, Dr. O'Quinn, um, and I would like to share with you, this is pretty consistent with the Birmingham Bowl every December, as well as the Magic City Classic.
Okay, um, my second question is regarding item 15, um, the agreement with the park board. Uh, according to that agreement, the park board would retain the, the parking, the parking, um, fees collected, and, um, that is a considerable sum, um, probably almost as much as what the ticket sales net, I would guess. Uh, so, uh, my question is, is, how does the park board handle those funds? Are those just go into a general account that are utilized by the park board, or do they...
It goes into the general fund.
Goes into the city of Birmingham's general fund?
Yes, sir. Where...
But they are not earmarked for the park board?
No.
So, I... This is just a, a, another general item of confusion, so, the, the park board is sort of this qu, quasi-governmental entity.
And, and Dr. Quinn, I, I can, I'm on the park board, so I'll...
But let me, let me explain where I'm confused, so, they're a named entity in this agreement, and in the agreement says that they retain the fees for, for parking, but you're telling me that those fees go into the city's general account, and, and therefore, we can allocate them however the council decides?
Chastity of Mayor's Office, it's, uh, Councilor O'Quinn, it's just like any other boards and agency that falls under the city of Birmingham. The library has a board that's managing of the library system, if the library has fees for overdue books, those funds go into the general fund of the city of Birmingham. They don't have a separated self-sustaining account for those funds to go into, to keep the operations of that entity going. That's why we use all these pool funds to keep the city operating, even if it's just for parking rent. So we combine all the funds for it to be spared evenly.
Okay. I think that answers my question.
Okay, Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to say, before I say, before I make a motion, that my objection to this is the timing. You know, I, I think there was an allegation made yesterday that there was some kind of racism here because it was Morehouse and Tuskegee. And I just want you to know, there isn't any, it's the timing.
Who made that?
Ms. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, hold on, Counsel Abbott, hold on, Counsel Abbott. Mr. Mayor, will you allow Counselor Abbott? We did, okay. So, sorry.
It's the timing of this. It's the fact that we're in the middle of this pandemic, and we have these financial issues. So for me, it's just if this game was going to be played next October instead of five months from now, I'd probably be okay. And certainly if we hadn't had a pandemic to affect our finances. So that being said, I move that we send this to committee of the whole.
Mr. President, may I speak to that before you all vote? It's a question, that's it.
Okay, I'm, let me just get it set up. All right, so motion and a second for committee of the whole. And so I would imagine that would need to be set up pretty quickly. We can do that if the will of committee, I mean, the council to set up a special call committee of the whole. So that can happen tomorrow, Thursday. So I just wanted to kind of give that preference. Mr. Mayor.
Just a clarification, Mr. President, to you and your colleagues. Do I understand it that all the economic incentive developments we're working on, because we're in the middle of this, you don't want me to present anything to this body?
No.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I don't think that's the case. I think what we need to do is figure out how, I think it would be good if we have work sessions just to understand, everybody, you know, we talk through, what I'm gathering is that, that there be a work session on a lot of the different initiatives that are coming forward. I think that would kind of alleviate a lot of, whereas it's discussed in, not necessarily the budget and finance, but there is a work session, and then the items come before. So there's, there's conversation from everyone, you know, before we move forward. So I think that's kind of, Mr. Mayor, the gist of kind of what I'm picking up. Instead of discussing it on Tuesday at the council meeting, allow there to be a work session where we can discuss these matters before. If they, I mean, if that needs to be a committee of the whole, where we do that a week or two beforehand, that's fine. Or if it's a committee, we just kind of emphasize to everyone to be present at those committee meetings. So I think that's where we are. So. Yes, ma'am.
Our voting is, I have my two different options. Is our vote on the floor that we will vote for committee of the whole? Or if we say also it's immediately, we should just clarify.
Yes, ma'am, a committee of the whole. It would be, what would we need to do? The earliest we can bring this back is two weeks for advertising purposes. So it would be to make a motion to go to committee of the whole. We would schedule that meeting within the next day or two, to have that meeting set so that it would come back within the next two weeks before the council, with us having discussion through committee of the whole in the next couple of days.
And is that committee of the whole, we, the agenda with that, be for this particular item? Or any other economic or economic development or economic incentives?
Mr. President, to her point, I would really like to see what other economic development incentives, because one thing, if we're working on other things, I would like to know what they are so I have an idea of what type of budgetary constraints that we're, that we're, that we need to outlay during these tough economic times where we don't know how much cash we have coming into our coffers.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. I would, President Protam, we will put that as agenda items and ask for reports as relates to economic development, projects that'll be forthcoming, so we can put all that on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk.
Counsel, Protam Alexander. This is for Cal, refer to Cal.
No.
You said no?
Yes.
Okay, council member here?
No.
Council member, Council member O'Quinn?
Yes.
Council member Smithman? Council member Williams?
Yes.
Council member Woods?
Yes.
Council member Abbott?
Yes.
President Parker?
Yes, all right. That item, I'll be back in, we'll set up the meeting. Committee of the whole meeting, all right, next item.
Counsel, just noting it had to be resubmitted, you know, it won't automatically come back.
I understand, we'll work to get all that.
All right, item sixteen is withdrawn, as well as item eighteen. And after that, we're going to item forty, which was removed from consent. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Birmingham Recycling and Recovery L L C, Birmingham for recycling services for recovered materials as needed at the unit price on file in the office of purchasing agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement on behalf of the city. Motion, please.
Please do.
All right, item is before you.
Go ahead, Counsel O'Quinn.
Thank you, President Parker. So up to this point, the city of Birmingham has not had a formal agreement with Birmingham Recycling and Recovery to process our curbside recycling collections. And so I'd like to get an explanation of why this is having to go out to bid at this time and for us to set up a formal agreement with them.
Counselor O'Quinn, Walt Givens is in the training now, so I'm not able to get in contact with him. He's a short version, so if you wanted to delay it, that's fine as well. Short version is, as we move towards trying to better at being recycling, we wanted to this, wanted to have this relationship with them. But we thought it was important to actually bid it out to actually get the best price. They actually came back as the best price, so that's why we went into a formal agreement with them.
Okay. Just by way of information, since it's not stated in the summary, I want the public to know that the bid is for sixty-five dollars a ton for the mixed recycling. And if there's contamination, it goes up to a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton. So the bottom line is, recycling is not free. The city, it costs the city of money for us to deliver our recyclables to the recycling center. I personally think that's the right thing to do, even if we have to pay for it. But I just want folks to know that there's, even not discounting the trucks, the people who work on those trucks, the equipment itself, there is costs associated with having a curbside recycling program. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any other questions on that item? All right. Ready to vote?
Counsel, Protam Alexander?
Aye.
Council member Hilliard?
Aye.
Council member O'Quinn?
Aye.
Council member Smithman?
Aye.
Council member Williams?
Aye.
Council member Woods?
Yes.
Council member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, okay, that item passes.
Item fifty-two, emergency.
Okay.
Receiving the emergency purchase notice from the purchasing agent relative to the repair of H V A C units at fire station number seventeen. And then addendum item fifty-two.
Do we want to call them up together, or we need to do separate?
Since they both take, well, just be on the safe side.
Okay.
Don't go to court or anything, okay? Item fifty-two, an ordinance to amend, ordinance number twenty dash forty-eight, as amended by ordinance number twenty dash fifty, and ordinance number twenty dash seventy-one to modify the shelter in place order, a public safety curfew for the city of Birmingham, the COVID-nineteen public health emergency, to remove the curfew, but requiring continued compliance with orders of the state health officer. I need you to pass today.
Question for unanimous, second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, a motion on the item, please.
I move the item.
All right, got it, it's before you.
All right. Any questions on this item here? Okay, all right.
Council member Protam Alexander?
Aye.
Council member Hilliard? Council member O'Quinn?
Aye.
Council member Smithman? Council member Smithman? Council member Williams?
Aye.
Council member Woods?
Yes.
Council member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
And fifty-three, an ordinance to amend, ordinance number twenty dash sixty-nine, as amended by ordinance number twenty dash seventy-two, requiring that face coverings or masks be worn in public in the city of Birmingham during the COVID-nineteen public health emergency and recovery. Then you see again for passage today. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, a motion on the item.
I move the item.
All right, it should be before you.
All right, Dr. Quinn.
Yes, so I've gotten a lot of correspondence over the past twenty-four hours regarding the face covering ordinance. And this is, we're considering item fifty-three right now, right?
We're considering fifty-three, item fifty-three.
Yes, okay, so. The question that I was asked was, why do we have to add the exception for bars and restaurants? And my understanding is that we have to bring our local ordinance into alignment with the governor's order. And I would just like to get some clarification or confirmation of that. So are we doing this due to the actions of Governor Ivey's safer-at-home order to bring our local municipal ordinance into alignment with her order? And what would be the consequences if we did not do that?
The city of Birmingham is still under a state of an emergency. We know that there's still community spread and that this virus still has the opportunity to, I guess, spread throughout the city of Birmingham. We know some of the vulnerable population is higher in the city than a lot of other parts of the state, which includes having a higher than per capita area elderly population, as well as some of those who have pre-existing conditions, as well as having a higher African-American black population in other parts of the state. Everything we've done has not necessarily been, based on what anyone else is doing, has been best in the interest of protecting the citizens of Birmingham. So as it relates to your question, two things. We're extending this, we're extending this, which is what for you today, because those numbers have decreased, even based on the White House's recommendation. The exceptions, I think that's what you're referring to as it relates to restaurants, breweries, bars, lounges, is that if they were opened up by the state, then there needs to be clarification, making sure people can eat and drink, and you can't eat and drink if you have a face cover on.
Right, so this is in, is it correct to say that what we are doing today is in direct response to the state actions that have taken place?
If you're referring to extending, extending our.
So the state order has allowed for the reopening of non-essential businesses, including bars and restaurants and breweries. Therefore, we are allowing, we are amending our ordinance to be in alignment with that state order. Is that correct?
I think it's fair to say that you can't wear face cover when you eat or drink.
Okay. Okay. I was just trying to clarify the relationship between what we do locally and what the governor's orders are.
The governor's order is the floor. Local municipality believes that there are certain health issues that are different from other areas of the state. Then within our legal right, within our state of an emergency locally, we can do what's necessary to protect the citizens here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, are there any other questions? Counsel, what, Counsel Smithman, then go to Counsel. Okay, Counsel Williams, and then.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing that I'd like to say about this, and it's not really a question, it's more of a comment, is, you know, face coverings are important. There are situations where they actually can be very useful. There's a lot of situations where if you're using social distancing, then they're not useful. There's a lot of situations where if you're constantly touching your face because you have a face mask on, then it actually does the opposite, has the opposite effect in terms of usefulness. I think that there is a legitimate cause of wanting people to wear masks, especially if that person, even if they're younger, will come in contact with a member of the public that is more susceptible, or maybe a member of their family or whatever social circle that is more susceptible to this. I do think, I do wish that we would have an education approach to this, where we were doing P S As and we were, we were trying to educate the public about the importance of wearing a face mask, especially if you're in an intimate retail situation, like a grocery store or other kind of boutique where you're close to other people. But I also think that, you know, business owners should, you know, they own their own business. They can mandate rules, you know, if you want to come in my business, whether it be a big box store like Publix, or whether it be a small mom and pop boutique, that you have to wear a face mask. You know, business owners should have the right to mandate that or not. And I do think that, I do think we should be leaning towards an education approach rather than a, rather than an ordinance and then law enforcement approach, where we have seen, right here in the city of Birmingham, you know, a level of defiance because it is law. And that's what happens when you have a mandate through ordinance instead of an education approach. So I am opposed to this. I think we should let our ordinance expire. I think that even if our ordinance does expire, and we do conform with what the rest of the state of Alabama is doing, that each business has the right to determine whether customers come in their store with coverings on. I also think that we're missing a huge point, and that is, social distancing is the best way to prevent this. Being in groups of people with, where you have the public all in face masks is not the answer. Social distancing is the answer. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Smithman, then we'll go to Counsel Hilliard.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President Parker. So I agree with us wearing masks, I agree with that. But I, I am of the agreement that the punishment is too harsh. Even if we, it's never enforced, the fact is there. I still believe that it should be citation only. You know, and that way we can focus on like what Counsel Williams saying, we can educate people. So I think that's really my biggest concern, is just that that punishment is on the books. I understand it's in every law, but I just think, you know, it's just really harsh when people hear, because I can't wear a face mask, I have to possibly, because of the judge's discretion, that I get up to thirty days in jail possibly. But that's all I have to say.
Okay, Counsel Hilliard.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. I've heard all of the comments, and I think they sound very, very interesting. But, you know, I wondered, do we realize that, that the potential numbers are steadily going up and not going down? I don't, you know, I haven't heard that sentiment that we are at a health crisis. And we're debating on whether. crap, a, a, a health crisis, and we're debating on whether, um, a, 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 a mask i- is important. I think education is definitely important, I agree with my colleague, but I think all means necessary are important to save lives. We're going to be looking at more lives being lost than possibly the first time around, do you realize that? Every news indication, as we speak right now, Dr. Fauci is speaking before the United States Senate, and he's saying that the numbers are not going to go down, they're gonna go up. Who wants to be responsible for numbers going up? And if a face mask will help at any point, we should continue to push that by law and by any fines necessary. I would also most say that the fines may not be harsh enough. You know, if we want to scare people or tell people, well, you know what, one sneeze can kill off a whole group of people. They're saying, I think I heard somewhere on the news the other day that a, a gentleman went to a, a club and he went to about six or seven clubs and shut down a country. An entire country, one person. And here we are debating on protection and fines. Not enough. Yes, education should be at the forefront, I agree. Yes, I believe in business, I believe in economic development, and I realize, I realize that we are in a very, very unique situation. But I've had a rouseled with it, do I value life or money? You think about that now. We need them both. You need them both. We need them both, but how can we justify, when we know in the African-American community the numbers are going to go up? They are going to go up, and for that sake, Mr. President, I represent an African-American district, and what I say is we stick with the mask, we stick with education, we stick with fines, we do whatever we have to do to alert and to alarm our communities, that it is extremely important that we protect each other. And we, at the end of the day, we have to face the facts. What do we support? Money or mass? That's what it comes down to. Money or protection? Are you willing, are you willing not to protect the people that you represent? Or when you go, you know, I have friends right now that could be possibly at risk, because some of them don't believe in masks. Some of these young people, I have to tell kids all the time, these younger kids, they're right, they're really taking this serious. They don't believe it, they won't even, I, I'm not listening to that news or that media. Well, then I know you and I are up in age, and I recognize that, and you look good for your age, you look good, girl, you really do. But, but I, I wa- but I want you to understand, sir, you deserve to be protected. We all deserve to be protected, let's protect each other. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Dr. Quinn.
Yes, I just wanted to state for the record that, um, you know, if you're looking at the public health data that's been reported for Jefferson County, there's nothing in the numbers that indicates that we should be doing anything different than what we've been doing for the last several weeks. Um, so, from the public health perspective, uh, I disagree with any loosening of the, the restrictions. Um, so, as our public health officials have done, uh, I would also urge the, the, the public to be extremely cautious, um, as things reopen. Um, I support our small business owners, and you would, under normal circumstances, be hard-pressed to find me in a bar, um, but I for sure am not going to a bar, uh, or any establishment where the staff or customers are not taking precautions, not exercising social distancing, not wearing face coverings. Um, so, um, again, to the public, please exercise extreme caution, um, and, and look out for yourself, protect your family, protect folks who are around you. Uh, this virus is still just as much in the community as it ever has been, there, the, again, the, the rate of new cases has not slowed. Um, we've been consistently adding about five percent every day, uh, to the, of new cases. So, um, I, I think it's important that as things are loosening up, we still send out the message that people need to know that nothing has really changed with the level of virus in the community, you still need to be exercising extreme caution. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Counselor Smithman, yes, ma'am.
I think I want to clarify, I am for face masks, I just, it was just against the jail. I, I have represented a majority African-American district, just like Counselor Hilliard, but I do think we do need to educate people, because when you put on your mask, you're supposed to wash your hands or use hand sanitizer before, and then when you take it off, I think that matters a lot, because we can have people wearing masks, but if they're not doing it properly, like, it defeats the purpose of having the ordinance. And also, I have a question for you, Counsel, uh, President Parker, what is your update on getting more statistics work for the city?
I will, uh, I guess at the end we'll, we'll talk, if you give me a moment, I'll update you on several different things.
Thank you, I think that will help as well for some constituents.
Okay, all righty. Yes, ma'am, President Protem.
Thank you, Mr. President, I hope my mic is on. Um, I just want to echo what each of my counselors have said this morning. Um, I do think it's important to know, when we talk about Dr. Fauci and we talk about these statistics that are in front of us, there is no decrease. There's no decrease in the number of people that are testing positive. We haven't seen that fourteen, fourteen-day span, which was supposed to trigger to us that we were in some sort of a decline, that the pandemic was lessening. I think that face masks give us an opportunity. They don't protect me, they protect you from me, and that's what we need to be aware of. I agree that our small businesses, they need all of the support, we need to support them financially, we need to look at what the businesses, before we go in them, how they want to protect themselves as well as us, and we make those individual decisions. But I also think we need to understand that, as Counsel Hilliard said, we are among that the demographic where we are most susceptible. There are demographics out there that show certain people are, have more subs-, you know, subsequent to be infected by this, their treatment and how they work with the disease, it could be more debilitating with people when they have underlying health issues. So, I would like to also call on you, Mr. President, to help us, guide us, as you've asked for additional testing sites. I think it's not only a part of education, but it's also the opportunity there for people to know when they're positive, and so we could find more of those, that information. But I do ask us to keep all of the statistics in mind, the data that is before us as far as the medical piece, and we use that in consideration when we look at the items that we want to, um, consider today. As a medical clinical laboratory, retired clinical laboratory technician, I've been on the forefront for hepatitis, for HIV, when we start talking about vaccines for SARS and other different things. Time is approaching, they will find the necessary means for us to work with this, but we need to be mindful as citizens and as a city of how we want to help to try to lessen the impact of this. Thank you.
Okay. President Protem Alexander, I will circle back once Counselor Abbott speaks, I'll circle back and, and comment on what you asked me and also Counselor Smithman. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I got new masks for Mother's Day, so, I, um, I'm a believer in wearing face coverings. I believe that, I mean, I am as it, as, I will defend my personal rights to the nth degree, but my rights stop where your rights begin. And the people who are resentful of wearing a face covering, to me, are inconsiderate and uncaring about their fellow man and woman. To me, we're, as, as the President Protem said, we're protecting other people from ourselves, and I would appreciate it if they would do the same for me. I'm in that demographic. My mother is at home, and she is in that demographic. Imagine the guilt that you would feel if you took this virus home to your family and killed them. You'd have to live with that for the rest of your life. I watched UAB students out drinking in the front yard and partying last night, a whole lot of them. Drinking beer in the front yard and just having a big time playing games all over each other, and I just thought, this is sad, this is sad, the selfishness, the, the level of selfishness is just incredible. But I admire this administration in this city, and I think that the city council has done the right thing. Yes, our punishments would be punitive if we actually did them, but, um, education is the key, and clearly, we still need a lot of it, but I think that, uh, this city is doing the right thing, we're trying hard, we can't control people, we can have all the laws on the books we want, and if people have the tendency to give us the finger, then that's just the way they are. But I think that the city of Birmingham is working hard to try to keep people safe and keep them out of the hospital, and I think that's the right thing to do. And if people feel their personal rights are being infringed upon, I'm very sorry about that, but I would appreciate it if they would take pity on the rest of us and just try to do right for a while. They probably don't like stopping at stop signs and red lights, but they do it because it's the law, so let's do this because it's the law. Thank you.
Okay, all right, um, do we want to vote first, or, and then I can offer commentary, or, whichever one, how do y'all want to do it? Let me, let me just, let me just make a couple of comments and then we can, um, we can vote on item fifty-three. As relates to one about the data, additional information, uh, we've had, had additional conversations with the Health Department, we've asked them to drill down a little bit deeper, uh, to make sure that they can provide more information, uh, so I would expect, uh, communication back very shortly on the fact that we needed, you know, the information that was shared, we've asked them to, to do more, to provide us more details as relates to the data. So, if you'll give me a couple of days, hopefully, Dr. Wilson and all, they will report and respond back to that. But I think there's a willingness, and I think they understand what we're looking for and how the data is important. For one, it allows us then to look at testing, and then so the next one is making sure we have expanded testing to where we're able to test in all ninety-nine neighborhoods. And so, as you're seeing now, there's more, we have the pop-up testing that goes on, that's, that's good, uh, but what we've got to do is get to expanded testing that we're looking to do where we're, where it's, it's stationary, it's like over at UAB, what they're doing on, on the south side has been great. What we've wanted to do then is expand those, uh, institutional type of where they're there for more than just two hours, and that's what we're doing now at UAB, to where they're there every day, and there is some normalcy there, where people can go, whether you have insurance, you don't have insurance, whether you have the symptoms or you do have the symptoms, uh, it allows all of us the opportunity, everyone, to be tested, uh, you just simply have to schedule an appointment. Uh, but we need to look for other areas to go out where there are other Legion fields throughout the city of Birmingham, and so that's what we've got to do, is to continue to have, uh, expanded testing swords throughout all of Birmingham. And then it just can't be temporary, this is going to be an ongoing, you know, issue where as we begin to open up the city and allow people back to some new normal, we have to be able to provide testing, that's just going to be part of what our new normal is going to look like. And so, uh, with the funding that has come from, uh, the, the CARES Act where it's a hundred and fifteen million, it's at the county, plus there's one-point-seven billion down in Montgomery, I think we need to have a conversation around making sure that there's funding in place to make sure all the citizens within the city are making sure that they have ongoing testing, because that's going to be that new model. And so, uh, we've got to, you know, depend on the Health Department, on the county, uh, to make sure that Birmingham has the necessary resources to be able to have testing on an ongoing basis, and there's funding in the CARES Act that mentioned, uh, there's, 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 uh, funding that goes through the end of the year, so there's, uh, there are some grant opportunities. So, that'll be the communication with the county and also through the one-point-seven bill that the legislature has, that at some point they'll figure out how all that's going to be divided up. So, you know, we, we've just got to be, continue to be proactive, and also on the education piece. I think we're going to be more hands-on as relates to making sure masks, hand sanitizers, uh, that the public, uh, needs to have. I think there's a shortage of it, but I think, uh, we can do a lot to make sure we provide those necessary masks and/or hand sanitizer, even if it's those sample, the two or three-ounce type of bottles, to be able to provide that to our residents. So, um, those are the kind of like the next steps, but, um, but I think we also have to look at, once we receive the data, that we're able to translate that to saying we need additional funding out of Congress and out of the White House to be able to address those socioeconomic issues that affect African-American community. I think we've got to look at, how do we deal with obesity, how do we deal with housing, how do we deal with those that are unemployed to get a workforce development? Those are the type of things we've got to look at to make sure that we just don't receive the data, but we have a plan to turn that into helping, uh, the residents throughout the city of Birmingham. So, it's a multi-tier approach, um, and we just all have to, you know, work collectively, and working with the mayor, working with the county, the state, uh, you know, and our federal partners to make sure that we can, um, you know, provide the necessary resources for our citizens in the city of Birmingham. That's kind of the, the, the approach we want to go, and we can drill down in more if we need to as we move forward, but the request is there for the Health Department to provide us more than less data as relates to the, um, you know, the, the, regarding African-Americans and, and being affected disproportionately by COVID-19.
Once we get that information, can we make sure the public knows about that?
Yes, ma'am, and what we'll do is, is, is probably ask the Health Department to brief, I know, Dr. Quinn, we all have mentioned that, is to allow them to come, talk to us, but also communicate with the public about, this is the data, this is what it means, and then order some of the additional next steps as it relates, uh, to making sure we can address the issues in our, in our neighborhoods, uh, because of COVID-19. So, yes, ma'am, it'll be a multi-tier approach, so, um, you know, I, 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 I think we just, I think they hear us, and I think we've just got to continue to hold everybody accountable. So, yes, ma'am, we'll continue to work on that. All right, um, ready to vote on this item? Counselor Wood, you want to talk after we vote, or?
Yeah, I just have a question, one, and you kind of hit on it, but, um, I think on the conference call yesterday, there was in- information given that there was, basically, we had a, enough capacity as it came to testing, and my question was, had they relaxed those, um, requirements to be tested? And so, you know, instead of having all the symptoms, you may have some of the symptoms, and so, has that taken place yet? And that, that was one of the questions I want to add to that list.
Okay, let me, well, let me, as it relates to Legion Field, and that's going to start on, on Thursday, um, whether you have symptoms or you just simply just want to be tested, you've been in the house, I mean, since March, but you want, you feel like you just want to go get tested.
Right.
You just simply schedule an appointment and they will, uh, test you. Uh, that's what we're able to do, that's what Legion Field, uh, that's what will happen there. Um, the phone number is two zero five nine two COVID, uh, that's the number to schedule, and that starts on Thursday morning, and that'll go five days a week, Monday through Friday, um, through, uh, June fifth. We'll assess it to see how things are going, and of course, we can extend it, uh, but we want to do is to not only have it, have these like, you know, standardized testing locations throughout the city of Birmingham, there needs to be throughout the city having, and then we'll allow those pop-ups that kind of come up, you know, for two or three hours, you know, during different days of the week to kind of fill in, but we, we need to be able to make it accessible to where residents are able to, you know, it's convenient for residents to be able, and not just, can you go for two hours? That works in certain districts, but in a lot of, in the other districts, we want to make it where it's like a nine to four, you know, to schedule- we want to make it where it's like a nine to four, you know, to schedule the appointment, and then go get tested, and then the results, you will be able to get those within twenty-four hours. So between twelve and twenty-four hours. So, so that's what you're saying, I think everything's starting to be a little uptick on how do we improve everything, but it's, but the goal is to have expanded testing throughout the city of Birmingham. Does that answer? Yeah, okay.
I think that's a big deal, is people being able to just get, not being turned away from being tested, and so we want as many people to get tested as possible, so.
And whether you have insurance, or you don't have insurance, the Health Department stepped up, if you don't have insurance, they will still test you, and the Health Department's picking up, you know, picking up those costs, but if you have insurance, of course, it will, you know, your insurance will cover it, so I think that way, there's no excuse for not, you know, if you feel like you want to be tested, symptoms or no symptoms, you have that availability. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, how long does it take to get the results? Do you know?
Starting with the, with the, with the lab works on Thursday, it's going to be, I would say, twelve hours, but just safely say twenty-four, I would say between twelve and twenty-four hour, twenty, twelve to twenty-four hour turnaround time, to be able to get the results.
I was just wondering, you know, I see that at the White House, they can get results here in fifteen minutes. Do you know where any of the fifteen-minute results are?
I'm sure that will probably be part of the new normal, as we are able to get those through, I think Abbott, and there's a bunch, there's several others. As we continue to move forward, I think you'll start seeing the fifteen-minute and five-minute tests becoming more available. But as of today, what we can provide is twelve to twenty-four hours, but the goal is to get it to where it's within, you know, fifteen minutes. And so that's probably what you'll see, probably in the next couple of months, it'll be, it'll be probably part of that new norm as we move forward. So I think testing's going to be here for, for a long time, as we continue to fight the COVID-19, so. All right, any other questions, thoughts? Okay, Mr. Clark, you ready?
Counsel Protem Alexander.
Aye.
Counselmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Counselmember Quinn.
Aye.
Counselmember Smithman.
Aye.
Counselmember Williams.
No.
Counselmember Woods.
Yes.
Counselmember Abbott.
Aye.
President Parker.
Uh, yes, okay, item fifty-three passes, okay. Anyway, I think that's everything, no quick announcements, Counsel Williams.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Parker, I just wanted to ask, who was named to be our Census 2020 Committee? We have an internal committee, correct?
We do, it's Counsel Williams, Counsel Smithman, and myself.
Okay, because I did, I received some information from someone, and I just wanted to pass along to that committee.
Okay, and, and what we were doing, once we were about to get ramped up, and then that's when we got sidetracked with the COVID-19, but I think if you give us a couple of days, the entire council, where we're going to have to make sure that we, as we're dealing with the COVID-19 issue, we're going to have to simultaneously deal with the census, because it impacts our census numbers, COVID-19's going to impact our census numbers, and that's for, that's going to affect us down the road. So we've got to deal, we've got to fight both fights, and it's going to require all of us, and so next week will come with a, with a plan to make sure we're doing more in the neighborhoods to kind of bring more awareness, and I think now, since the government's opened up the census, officials will be able to be out now, they've been kind of, because of the, of the shelter in place throughout the country, they've been working remotely, so now they'll be out more and more visible, and I think that will help bring awareness to people to now, everybody's just been dealing with the COVID-19. I think now we just got to always emphasize census, 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 make sure you take part in it, so.
And then to that note, too, is, it's, it's so easy to fill out the census online. Everybody was mailed a card that has a PIN number or an access code on it, and if you, for whatever reason, or did not receive that, you can still go on to the census website, fill in a little bit of information about yourself, takes, I did it, it took less than five minutes, it really took probably two minutes, no intrusive questions, just basically name, address, and maybe a couple other questions, but anyway, it's easy to do, and that way, you do not have to have a census worker come to your house and knock on your door and bother you and your family, so I highly recommend going to the, going ahead and doing it. Right now in Jefferson County, I think we're at fifty percent, and that means, you know, if you want to equate that to something, that's fifty percent of the population, that's fifty percent of, of who we actually are is being counted, and I would equate that to fifty percent of federal revenue coming to our.
That's going to be, yeah, cut.
Our city, because we only have fifty percent participation right now. So we need to get those numbers up from fifty percent, it's easy to do. You know, we have people that always call all nine of our offices about, you know, we need, we need better street paving, we need this, we need that. All of these are federal dollars that come from the count, the count is the census. So fill out your census, and let's do, let's try to do a lot better than fifty percent in Birmingham.
And I think we're going to need Counsel Abbott, like you were doing the World Games, we got to do the census, so I think, and I think a lot has been attributed to the COVID-19, but now we've got to, you know, tackle both wars simultaneously, so, thank you, President.
And I'll second his motion.
Okay, all right, cool.
Favor, let it be known by saying that.
Aye.
All opposed?